So, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Council Committee of the Whole meeting. It's Wednesday, June 17th. As usual, we've gotten so good at our virtual meetings, but I will just say a few words. As we all know, because of the peacetime emergency, we have determined it's not practical or prudent to have an in-person meeting. And I think I've said this, we're kind of at the council keeping with a practice to keep meetings virtual until, at least through Labor Day, and then reassess. And that's true with anybody who can telecommute, even though the economy is kind of opening up. We're doing that under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 021. If there is public, it is on the agenda that you can, a public can make comments And we will get back to any comments or questions in a timely manner. We are actually not able to provide public comment directly during the meeting, but we are able to be contacted. You can, I think it's gone pretty well where people either use the wave function, the comment only for kind of technical things, like you'd like to get my attention, to be called on, or what seems to work best is just to wave or speak up. When you are speaking, kind of remember to state your name and for those that may be on the phone. So, let's start in and start with the call to order and with the roll call to determine if we have a quorum. And I see Liz is here, so Liz, can you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson.
Here.
Barbara.
Here.
Chambliss.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Fredson.
Here.
Wilson.
Here. With me, did you say me? Sorry.
I did, yes.
Okay.
Lee.
Here.
Lilligrin.
Here.
Lindstrom.
Here.
Musa.
Yeah.
Sterner.
Here.
Bento.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Zaren.
Present.
Chair Zelli.
I'm here. Great, that sounds like we have a quorum. The next item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
Chair Zelli, this is Sterner. I have motioned to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Lindstrom moves the second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Liz, please call the roll.
Atlas Ingabretson. Barbara.
Aye.
Chambliss.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Fredson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lilligrin.
Aye.
Lindstrom.
Aye.
Musa.
Aye.
Sterner.
Aye.
Bento.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Zaren.
Aye.
Chair Zelli.
Aye. The motion is adopted. And next item is the approval of the minutes from our June 3rd, 2020 meeting. They have motioned a second to approve the minutes.
Cummings moves.
Thank you.
Second by Barbara.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Liz, please call the roll.
Aye.
Thank you. Barbara.
Aye.
Chambliss.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Fredson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lilligrin.
Aye.
Lindstrom.
Aye.
Musa.
Aye.
Sterner.
Aye.
Bento.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Zaren.
Aye.
Chair Zelli.
Aye. Thank you all. The minutes are adopted. So, we have a couple of information items today. And the first information area was a subject that we had talked about, I think, back when we were all meeting in person and we were trying to find a time and when we both were available for a committee of the whole and when our guests were available. And I'm so glad we were able to schedule that for today. This is a discussion on disparities people with disabilities face in society. And this is going to be presented, we have guest David Finley, the ADA Director from the Minnesota Council on Disability, and my friend Ken Rogers, Transportation Accessibility Advisory Committee, TAC member. And I love seeing you smiling. It's so nice to see you. And so nice that we have you and David here. So, I will just turn it over to both of you and hear your presentation. We'll have a chance to ask some questions.
Great. Thank you, thank you Chair and Councilmembers. David Finley here. I also am the Chair of the Transportation Accessibility Advisory Committee and am lucky enough to have Ken join me on this presentation. I'll do a, just a, and we definitely appreciate you elevating this issue. A lot of what the council does serves folks with disabilities. I'll kick it off with just a little, a little tidbit of disability awareness. I myself do identify as an individual with a disability. It is what we call in our community, non-apparent. It could be called invisible or non-visible. And a funny quip that we like to tell each other is that, so folks with visible disabilities, like someone who uses a wheelchair, everybody always has stereotypes or judges them on what they see. You use a wheelchair, what can't you do? You're blind, what can't you do? And with folks with non-apparent disabilities, it's always a question of, oh, you don't have a disability or, oh, you know, that's not even a disability. A lot of people don't even believe it's a thing, including, in my case, the entire country of Italy doesn't actually believe that what I have impairs my life in one or more ways. So, I will let Ken introduce himself and ask a question. Take it away, Ken.
All right, thank you. I had a little scare there for a moment because I couldn't quite log on. Always an issue with me as a blind person who uses assistive technology to communicate when we are using a tool that is not optimal for people who use assistive technology. And WebEx is really widely known for not being friendly to people who use assistive technology specifically for blind individuals. So, I don't know why it went through this fifth time, but I'm just lucky to be with you. So, thank you very much. And thanks for the mention early on, Chair Zelli. I appreciate that and good to see you as well. So, my name is Ken Rogers. I am a TAC member. I represent District D, the Minneapolis area on TAC. And I'm also during the day, I work at the Department of Transportation. I'm the ADA Title I Disability Programs Coordinator and I deal with all of the reasonable accommodations for all of our employees. So, besides being a blind individual, I am intricately day-to-day working with people with disabilities and ensuring that they have the accommodations they need to be able to do their job effectively. So, I would like to start off with a question back at you all as members of this committee. I don't have the ability to look at my screen and see everybody's faces. So, I would appreciate it if we could go around and if you could just identify yourself again, identify which district or which area you represent. And then, one question I would ask that you would respond to is, what's one thing you would love to come away from this meeting knowing? And I'll let anybody take it.
I might, if I can help, because I can kind of read. Everybody has different views on their screens. But just reading my screen, Judy? You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Judy Johnson. I represent the northwest part of the Metro Region District 1, so all the way up to Rogers, down to Plymouth, and then out west in kind of a suburban edge community. I appreciate the opportunity to listen and learn today as I'm trying to listen and learn and to a lot right now and be a better representative for all people in the community. I hope to gain insights and start a deeper process learning about differently-abled people. When I was doing some DNI work, I, one thing that I, it hit me because we talked about it, was if we could make everything accessible for all people, life would be better for all people instead of one-off, kind of do something for certain people, just make it, make it so everybody can use it. So, I just, I'm going to learn and I appreciate this opportunity. So, thank you so much.
Great. And just go to Molly?
Sure. I am Molly Cummings and I represent District 5, which is Hopkins, Edina, Richfield, and Bloomington. And I have also, for 17 years, trained service dogs for people with physical disabilities other than sight and hearing. I guess what I would like to understand more is more specifics on what we as a council can do to make the various areas in which we have a say more accessible, more responsive to the needs of individuals with disabilities. What specifically would you like to see us work in the areas of responsibility that we have?
Right. And Peter? You may be muted.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Chair. Hi, Ken. Peter Lindstrom, District 10. And that's Roseville up to Blaine. I'll turn your question into a question myself, which former Mayor Ed Koch from New York City used to say to his residents, "How am I doing?" And I would like your input on how are we doing? And it's interesting that we start this conversation by talking about WebEx and its limitations. So, maybe that's a precursor to that answer. Thank you.
Phil Sterner? Phil?
Good, Chair Zelli. Phil Sterner. Hi, Ken. And I represent Burnsville, Eagan, Rosemont, and Inver Grove Heights. And so, I'm kind of excited about, my question would be is, how do we have, get equity for disabled community? Like, where are we not measuring up in what things we can do to make sure it's equitable for all people? And thank you for taking the time to address us today.
Hi, I'm Deb Barber. I represent District 4. So, it's most of the southwest part of the metro, so most of Scott and Curver County. I know both of you gentlemen from my time previously on the council because we all served on the Metro Mobility Task Force together. So, what I would like to know is, we talked about a lot of things and came up with a lot of plans. And I would like to know, like, from that experience to what has actually been implemented, what have we done right and what have we done wrong? And what do we need to really push ahead from some of the outcomes from that task force? And I'm really glad you're both here today to talk.
Great. Raymond?
Hello, I'm Raymond Zaren, District 9. I represent a multitude of cities in Anoka County. Personally, I have a brother with a disability. I have a son with a disability. I personally have something of a disability. And so, my personal experience is pretty robust in this regard. From, from, I really don't have any particular question, a very poignant question. I would just, I'd like to take some time to listen. I think I'm a very good listener and find out more about what the council can do for folks. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Riva from District 2 and that includes Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center, Champlin, Osseo, Ridley, Hilltop, and parts of Green Lake Park. I would like, do people have more training about what accommodations mean? And how do you accommodate, how do you accommodate a person with disabilities? I just think that should be training that's given to the general working population and also for people who have to accommodate in different buildings as well as age disabilities and accommodating people in our workforce and in our world who are elder or elderly.
Sue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Sue Vento. Ken and David, I represent 11 cities and two townships spanning from Lynwood Township down to the southern end of Maplewood. A year ago, I participated in a conversation, David, I believe you were there. There was a really, it was, it was great discussion for me. And what I walked away with was a comment that a woman from, I believe, New Brighton or Shoreview made toward the end of the meeting when she said that none of us goes to bed at night with the assurance that we're going to wake up the following morning with the same abilities. And that just has stuck with me ever since then. And I'm particularly interested in what the gaps are in creating a more inclusive metro region for people with, who are facing the challenges of disabilities. And if there are any of those gaps that you think might be pretty easy to tackle in short order that we could quit wasting our time on and just do it? So, what are the gaps? And are there any easy ones we can knock off right away?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wendy Wolf. I represent District 16, which is a large portion of Dakota County and a small portion of Scott County. What I would like to come away from this with is a better understanding of where the rest of my colleagues are at on disability issues. I've been enmeshed in this world pretty deeply for some time and I want to better understand where other people are at.
Abdi, are you, I know your video's not there, but maybe your audio is. We'll try going back. How about Chris Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Ferguson. Ken, you and I served on the Transit for Local Communities Board together. So, I've had the pleasure of learning from you before. I think the biggest question I have is really, what are the, what are the things that we've committed to doing to, for, for, you know, in our various agreements or various meetings that we've had that haven't been done that we should be, you know, getting back to and making sure we actually do the things that we've, we've committed to and the changes that we've already agreed to make but have not completed yet. So, and I, and I know you have many thoughts and ideas of, as you've shared in the past. So, I look forward to the news.
Just looking around.
Hello, this is Lanaya Atlas Ingabretson and I'm Councilmember representing District 6, which is St. Louis Park, Golden Valley, Crystal New Hope, the neighborhoods in southwest South Minneapolis, Bryn Mawr, and all of the neighborhoods west of Lyndale in South Minneapolis. And I think one thing I'd love to hear is, if there was one thing that you wish we would all just do, what would that be? And as large or as small, but if there is one thing that you just were like, ah, get this done. What is that? The other thing I'd love to hear more about is so often when we talk about equity, and especially as we've started trying to focus on racial equity, it's often brought up that racial equity and disability are opposing of each other. So, I'd love to hear your thoughts on the relationship and the connection between racial equity and disability equity.
Chris Fredson? I think I saw him there.
Thank you, Chair. Chris Fredson from District 14, representing the western half of the city of St. Paul. I think I'd be most interested in kind of dovetailing with Councilmember Barber's question. I guess what kind of data sets are out there and what kind of accountability mechanisms are out there to measure our progress?
And Chai, I see you now.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, David and Ken. I had the pleasure of knowing both of you from my first year on the council as the TAC liaison. And I appreciate, I appreciate all you do and I know the power of your voices. And so, I just want us to listen to what you have to say. Back to what my colleague Peter Lindstrom said, let's know how we are doing and how, what we can do better.
And thanks. Abdi, can you hear me? Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, lovely.
Thank you. So, this, Abdi Musa, I represent in San Antonio, Southeast and Subminneapolis. My question will be, how are we doing with coming to accommodating folks with autistic symptoms?
I think I, did I?
Can you hear me?
Did I, did I? Oh, yeah, we did. That was wonderful. Thank you, Abdi. Did I get everybody that, other than myself?
Yeah, Chair, this is Robert. I didn't.
I'm sorry, Robert. I'm looking right at you.
Right, thanks. So, bujun in the megana, duck. Hello, my relatives. I'm Robert Lilligrin. I am a citizen of the White Earth Ojibwe Nation and I am the Met Councilmember for District 7, which is south-central Minneapolis, downtown to the river, North Loop, all of North Minneapolis, and Robbinsdale. And thanks, Ken and David, for being here and for helping us with this conversation. And thanks, Ken, for talking about the limitations of WebEx as well. Because I know, and I think I counted 10 online meeting platforms and I know I have my preferences and, and the ones that I don't work so well with. And so, it's good to hear so I can be more sensitive as we schedule meetings and decide what platforms to use. And I think today, kind of two things I was hoping for, and one of them, Lanaya Councilmember Atlas Ingabretson just hit on so beautifully and said it so well, but it's sort of the co-location of equity with disability communities, equity with the race equity conversations that we're having and how we co-locate those and sort of understand the data. And, and the other would be to, just kind of acknowledge, and I've been a policy guy for a really long time now. And lately, one of my favorite sayings, and I picked this up from a young leader, is that policy isn't change. And change is the work that you're doing or the work that any activist or advocates are doing. And then, we can codify it, hopefully sustain it within policy. And so, I guess that's how we can best support the change that you and your fellow community members are, are making happen right now. Thanks, Nigwich.
Which leaves me. Chair Zelli, thank you, David and Ken. I really have been looking forward to this session. And I appreciate that we have a wonderful council and only Francisco Gonzalez, I'm sorry I couldn't be here, but everybody's here. And I, and we have a tremendous range of geography and backgrounds and, but we do, I think, come together with it, with it, with it true interest. I know I do and I've learned from you in the past. And one of the things I'm thinking about, which touched on particularly by Robert and Lanaya, is this intersection between all differences. Is this, is this, whether there's rules and statutes about the ADA, how do we kind of, and we've seen it, I saw a little amend on how we think about shifting a culture, both internally and then how we work with the external world or the public that we, we serve and, and are part of. And when is, and I always use the curb cut as an example, when is the curb cut that's there for people who roll or walk or are differently-abled, but, but everybody benefits? You know, so how is it we, we, we think about this and what other areas are that we can have this cultural shift, not just policy and rules, where everybody benefits from a heightened sensitivity or, or a way to kind of understand that differences are so subtle and nuanced and sometimes obvious, sometimes not so obvious? So, how do we, how do we, how do we work on that here in, in our world? Anyway, thank you, thank you for the question and thank you, everybody, for the introduction.
Sure. And I would just like to add before I start, I very much appreciate your willingness to respond to my question. I think that helps us try to figure out how we can be most helpful in this limited amount of time that we have together. And before I even go any further, I want to just add, and I don't mean to speak for David, but I'll include David in this. We are at your disposal. Anytime that you'd like to continue this conversation, we're, we'll make time. This is so important for both of us and realizing that we have a piece of the puzzle that we live with every day that may not be your own awareness or experience that could be helpful in the work that you do. We make ourselves available to you on an ongoing basis anytime you'd like. So, I'll put that invitation out first. Some of the, some of the items that you mentioned are really complex, obviously. And if it were easy, we would have solved this problem already. We wouldn't have this need for a discussion. I think there, the cynicism in me has some really simple things that can be done, but nothing about this is simple, as you well know. The work that we all do every day is not simple. If it were simple, there'd be no need for us. It would just be done. It's complex work. And I think acknowledging that it's complex is key, first of all. We don't have all the answers and we don't have to have all the answers. But I think we need to be able to use our resources and use them smartly is, is one of the first pieces of information I'd like to share. The Council on Disability is a great resource. TAC is another great resource. And then, individual members have different levels of, of contacts that they can add to that. So, I, I think we shouldn't be afraid to reach out and use those things. That's, that's smart. That's using what resources we have at our disposal. The issue of, what I heard many times spoken was the difficulty with equity and, and equality. And they're different. Equity and equality are very different concepts, yet we oftentimes use them interchangeably. And then, many times, the way we use them interchangeably is appropriate. But I want to start off from the very get-go that But I want to start off from the very get-go that equity and um equality are very different concepts. Um, and, and I think one way to identify that um clearly is um by identifying first off, and, and maybe this is a little bit of a step backwards, but one of you mentioned um the fact of n- not being guaranteed you're going to wake up the next day with the same abilities that you had basically when you went to bed. And I'm paraphrasing that, and I probably did a horrible job at, at paraphrasing, but you get what I mean. Um, I am the living example before you of someone that has experienced that. I was a fully sighted, able-bodied individual. Um, I was a cardiac nurse at Abbott Northwestern in the middle of a wonderful career. And one day I discovered I had an eye condition. It was an eye disease, and I would be blind in a year. There was no treatment. And I was literally blind in a year. So I went from fully able-bodied one day to a few days later being completely without sight. I mean completely. I have no light perception at all, nothing. Um, that's quite a, a change, um, quite a change from no disability to a major disability dysfunction. Um, I represent what can happen to each and every one of us at any moment of any day. You could be hit by a, a car crossing the street. At any moment, any one of us can become a person with a disability. And so I think that what that, what that does for me is builds in some connection of why this should be an important topic for everybody. It's not just a topic when you become disabled, if you become disabled, but we can all, that can all happen just in the blink of an eye, literally. So we need to be aware of this, not i- in a way that we should live in a frightened manner. I'm not suggesting that at all. Um, but what I'm suggesting is that our awareness needs to be broadened from our own specific silo that we all live in individually, to one that's just a little bit greater. And when we expand our awareness outwards, um, we gain a different perspective. And I like to think that because I've lived in both worlds, the non-person with a disability and the person with a very significant disability, I like to think that I have a different kind of perspective um that can bridge the gap, kind of connect those dots. I, I think if we were to think simply about a solution, one of the simplest ways to make the greatest amount of change and build awareness amongst ourselves and our colleagues is it, I can wrap up in one word, and that's inclusion, inclusion. I know there was one individual who identified themselves as a person with a disability on the, on the council, on the committee, I'm sorry, and um, imagine what your work would be like if there were more individuals that were council members, committee members, that have visible and um dealt with disabilities day in and day out. Your awareness would be better. Um, maybe your knowledge about accessible technology would be different. And just to take that one step further, I'll tell you, one of the key factors, besides the technology and linking up and all of that stuff that happens in our computers, that we have no clue how it really works, besides that piece working, um, thank goodness that does work. The problem that makes something inaccessible for some people, and not all people with disabilities would have a problem with WebEx, but people who are visually impaired, even if we had a presentation that were being shared, I wouldn't be able to see that shared image, because that would be an image. It's a picture. Pictures are not letters that I can discern using my software that allows me to read things on my computer. That would be an image. That's like looking at a photograph. And a photograph is not accessible for people who can't see, or who use screen reader devices or technology. So even if I could connect as I am now, and we were sharing something on the screen, I would not be able to access that screen share. Um, so how accessible is that? So that brings me to a really important point. There's different levels of accessibility. And, and again, getting back to the simple solution is inclusion. If we had more people surrounding us that we worked with on a, on a day-to-day basis, we would have a greater awareness that other people do things differently. That would be a constant reminder. That's one way. Um, and that's a pretty simple way, uh, when you think about it, to build awareness into any working group or working committee. Um, to have a diversity of abilities, a, a diversity of thought, a diversity of how things, how people do things to accomplish their tasks. Uh, that helps to build in a sense of building awareness that there's multiple ways of doing things. Someone mentioned policies, and oftentimes we think we can just implement the perfect policy, and that will take care of all the problems that we have, and all the problems will go away. Giving an example of a policy that was really detrimental to the disability community in general, that was um passed by the Met Council. And it wasn't you all individually, it was the Met Council previously. And I, I don't mean to throw anybody under the bus, and I'm just using this as an example. Please don't uh think I'm pointing fingers. I'm just using this as an example. It, I've been a part of the TAC, Transportation Access Advisory Committee for a long time, off and on, uh, throughout the years. Um, i- in many years past, people would come before the, the TAC committee, present their concept, their project, to get feedback from the committee. Um, and that's the perfect opportunity and way to use the TAC. The TAC is made up of people with disabilities, uh, significant disabilities, all types of disabilities. And to get that input is really important. Time and time again, and this is in the past, we would provide our input and advice. Please don't do that. That's going to disenfranchise this group of people for these reasons. And it would be very clear that information would be taken. Then when the project got developed, it was like we never even had an input into that at all. It was discounted. So it got to the point where people on the TAC didn't even want to provide guidance or advice or information, because it was, we didn't know anything ever happened with it. It never got implemented into projects. Didn't seem like it anyway from the outset when, when the project was developed. Today, we have a very different structure. We have uh planners and project managers that come to us, present their ideas. We give them a lot to think about, and they go back and incorporate those things into the plan and implement them. It's a very different relationship today, which I'm very grateful for. So I think, again, when you can build awareness into the work that you do and get different perspectives on the projects that you're involved with, I think that's a key factor in ensuring that the project you develop and you roll out is going to be a project that is embraced by the larger community. Um, there's one other example that I want to give, and then we, we can get rid of doing dirty laundry, or airing dirty laundry. But it was recently, and uh we still haven't come to a resolution. And maybe this is a good place to share this as, and I'm using it again as an example, not necessarily to throw anybody under the bus. But a couple of summers ago, one of the departments of Metro Transit came to TAC to share a new policy that was going to be implemented, and it was the new wheelchair policy. And it used to be that individuals that used wheelchairs would have to take their children out of the wheelchairs, collapse those up to get on the bus, and then sit and, and ride, take their ride. Um, the policy was changed so that people with wheelchairs could roll their wheelchairs on the bus and sit in the area of seating that's reserved for, or identified as seating for people with disabilities, and not have to collapse their wheelchairs. That was the officially called the stroller policy, I, I believe. Thanks, David. We advised that that was not a good idea, that that was going to pit the disability community against moms with strollers, or dads with strollers, and what's going to happen when there's a conflict for that particular seating area, and you have an individual that needs that wheelchair accessible seating and can't use that because there's a wheelchair or two in those spots. We brought that up as a really major concern. It seemed to be heard. The policy was implemented anyway. And later on, then we have issues of exactly that. Um, people with disabilities feeling like they don't have a place to sit. Uh, I, I'm sorry, I, stroller policy is what I meant to say before, not wheelchair policy. Stroller policy is what I'm talking about. Um, so we're, we're at this impasse now where we have this stroller policy that's shared among Metro Transit riders, that they can bring their wheelchairs on and not collapse them, and use the disability seating area for their seating and being out of the aisles. Um, but we don't have any policy in terms of what do we do when there's a conflict? What do we do when there's multiple wheelchairs using up that disability seating space? And then we have individuals that need that space in order to secure a spot on the bus. We don't have any, um, any uh system in place, or system or policy in place to determine what happens in that situation. And that's happened numerous times. We hear that i- a- as fact, that has happened. And now that we're approaching summer again, it's probably going to happen again. Um, that, I think, is a great example of equality versus equity. Yep, the disability seating is there, but if it's utilized by somebody else, then is it accessible and is it equitable for everybody that needs seating on a bus? Those are some things that need to be discussed. And you, before a decision is made, an appropriate decision is made, one needs to know the, the effect that one's decision is going to have on all of those components before truly um an, an equitable decision can be made as to what is the right thing to do. Now, there may very well be um things we can put in place, uh, processes we can put in place, procedures we can put in place, that will allow that shared space to be utilized to the fullest extent. But we didn't go that far. We didn't talk about that. We just talked about the overall policy. And we never really dealt with the issues that those uh policies could bring up later on. I think those are some important pieces. Um, I'm going to stop talking. Dave, you have anything to add?
Yes, yes, I do. Um, and this, this, I think this stroller policy example is good, because thi- this isn't a matter of um, of, of saying, oh, it's, you know, parents with kids in strollers who need to use, who need to use buses versus folks who use wheelchairs. It's a matter of what can the council do to serve a, a, all of its constituents? You know, maybe there needs to be more accessible space on these buses. Let's, let's really dig in to the solution rather than um, 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 sometimes, and it's not intentional, ever usually, sometimes falling back on, okay, now we just have two communities that um, that, that face struggles and oppression, and now they're kind of at odds with each other. Cause now you have a mother with a stroller and someone with a wheelchair, and they both need this space on the bus. Well, how can we figure that out? You know, it shouldn't be the, the mother with a wheelchair versus the, the individual with, with a disability. Um, one thing that, that I think speaks to that, and also in, in general, some of, some of your answers to our questions, which I think um were very poignant. Thank you all, uh, committee members and, and Chair. Um, is this issue of culture change? I think culture change is much more important than policy change. Legislation doesn't change people's minds. Um, um, really, uh, ex- having um an experience or understanding someone else's experience is really what does it. So my question to you, and you don't have to answer this, um, is, so when Ken was telling his personal story about him acquiring his disability, how many of you, how many of your initial reaction was to feel bad for him, or to feel sorry for him, or to pity him? Oh, my gosh, it's so sad. You lost your vision. You know, that, that was, that's my initial reaction to that. That's um, that's a, that's a product of our culture, of our society, imposing on us that disability is something that's bad, or undesirable, or something that needs to be fixed. Which is not the case, and folks with disabilities are guilty of this too, uh, just like of society is. So what I would, what I would say to that um is, and, 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 and I think what uh, uh, helps us kind of understand what folks with disabilities bring to the world. Um, uh, Chair Zelli, you, you kind of summed it up nicely. We like to talk about curb cuts. Um, and how, you know, a curb cut was uh essentially invented by some radical wheelchair users in, in Berkeley, um, that, that, that liberal city in, in, in Northern California um in the sixties. A bunch of wheelchair users got some bags of cement and radically put up a, a curb cut. So, you know, they didn't have to ride their wheelchairs in the streets anymore and look for driveways to get onto the, onto the sidewalk. Well, now that it's ubiquitous in our society, everybody benefits from it. Everybody from people who have strollers to um delivery folks, you know, your FedEx and your UPS people love it. Your bikers, they love it too. They don't, they can, you know, go on their paths and be on their, on, on the sidewalks now where they're, when they're allowed to be on sidewalks. But that's just one example of hundreds. I could list a dozen right now of any time that somebody with a disability brings their perspective to the world, and they um, this also ties into the accommodation questions that was brought up by, by uh, member Shambless. That any time that somebody who, who has been living in a world that was not designed for them for their entire lives and adapting to that world, any time they bring that adaptation, or you could even say accommodation, any time they bring that adaptation to the world, and the world is more accessible to people with disabilities, it benefits everybody in society. You know, curb cuts now benefit people who like to walk and text. Cause if there was a curb there, people would be eating their phones when they tripped over the curb. They can just smoothly go into the street and not pay any attention to the curb at all. But, 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 but that does bring us to, to this, this issue of kind of accommodations versus accessibility, where, where you have, um, and another member, um, I think it was, let me look over my notes here, um, who said, you know, what if, what if the world was fully accessible? Again, i- uh, uh, a, an accommodation is something that we do after the fact to, to um, you know, make this part of this world more accessible for this one person, whether it's to do their job, which is what Ken does. That's how the one of the ADA is employment and accommodations. Um, or whether it's you're having a meeting, there's a community meeting, and you want everybody in the community to come, and you're going to have it in an accessible space. You're going to have um a sign language interpreter. You're going to provide maybe a meal and maybe childcare for people who wouldn't be able to come because of a disability, or they have a family, or they got to cook, or they got another job. So you're holding it at night, um, or you're holding one during the day and one at night. These are all different forms of accommodations, some for folks with disabilities, some for folks without disabilities. Um, accessibility is where it's just automatic. It's built into the environment. Um, a, a, a thought experiment I like to, I like to, to, to put out there is, so what if the world was fully accessible? Would there even be such a thing as a disability? So if, if, if a person with a wheelchair could get everywhere, and this is, I mean, it's a radical thought idea, whatever you want to call it, but if, if a person with a wheelchair- But if, if a person with a wheelchair could get everywhere that somebody who didn't use a wheelchair could get, then would that even be considered a disability? So if there, I mean, if there was one takeaway, it would be thinking of the world as a place that benefits from folks with disabilities rather than a place that, that just costs more because of folks with disabilities. Or a, a world that feels bad for people with disabilities, or a world that, that, that needs to heal people with disabilities. There are so many examples in healthcare where, with disparities where discrimination is legal, you know? One example would be, and I know this doesn't apply to what you do, but it's just an example of legalized discrimination against people with disabilities. Is that there's a waitlist for a heart transplant. And if you have a disability, you're at the bottom of that list. The medical community views you as less than, not as worthy to receive that heart because you have Down syndrome or because you're blind. So they'll give it to, you know, the white lawyer. I know, you know, that's not necessarily the exact scenario. But that's real. That's, that's, you know, we had a bill last session that attempted to stop that in Minnesota. And COVID took over, so everything else went, went out of the, out of the window. But it's, it's just a real example of legal discrimination against folks with disabilities. And I, I prepared a, you know, a long list of, of disparities, you know, data from a bunch of different sectors. I don't necessarily think that that's the best way to have this conversation, but we can speak to some of those points. I'd much rather have you all come away from this with a lot of what Ken said, but also that understanding that the world is enriched by people who have different experiences. And it, and people who have different experiences and have been adapting to a world that wasn't built for them are essentially all minority groups, all oppressed groups. So I put forward that if you do something for one, then it most likely will benefit everybody. I, I, I really like to push back on the, and I think member Atlas Ingberthson, you, you called out the elephant in the room. There's always someone who says, well, if we give, if we give resources to disability, that takes away from resources for people of color. Which, I mean, that's what, that's what the powers that be want. They want minority groups to fight over crumbs of a pie is essentially what, you know, that's, that's how you maintain the status quo is you let those people fight over little crumbs of the pie. Another term I like to say, and then I'll, I'll be quiet and let Ken take over, is that disability does not discriminate. Like he said, anybody can join our community at any time. It doesn't care what color your skin is, how much money you have, where you live. Anybody can either be born into the community or anybody can join our community at any time. And actually, there is data that shows, and I think Councilmember Mousi, you, you, you brought up the autism issue. There are, there, there's plenty of data that shows that folks of color have a higher prevalence of disability. And that can be tied to environmental stressors, whether it's living in areas that, that have more pollution next to factories. So you have higher occurrences of asthma or cancer. Whether it's higher occurrences of autism in our Somali community here in Minnesota, which is, which has been, which has been proven. But, but it's, I, I, you know, I'm a, I'm a white guy with an invisible disability. I can't speak to the experience of, of people who have visible disabilities or people who aren't white. But I know plenty of, of brown and black folks who have disabilities who, who, whose oppression is, is, is compounded by both their skin color and their disability. And to discount one does not help them, and I would say does not help the general public or other oppressed groups in our society. So I'm going to leave that there. Ken, do you want to pick it up from here?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, I'm going to give you all a chance to, to speak in just a second here. But I, I wanted to bring one piece, one concrete piece that might help people wrap your heads around this concept of intersectionality that the disability community is rich with. In the state of Minnesota, we have a program called Connect 700, which is a program designed to accommodate in a different way individuals with disabilities to allow them an accommodation to the general competitive hiring process that we have in our civil service system of state employment today. And the purpose of implementing that program, it was implemented by Governor Dayton. The purpose was to help create Minnesota reflect, the workforce reflect more effectively the constituents that we serve as taxpayers. So to, to help our workforce mirror the, the makeup of the people that we serve in the state of Minnesota. And we have historically been extremely low statistically with hiring people with disabilities in the state workforce. So this program was created as a means to deal with that concept. Between, so it started in 2016. At the end of 2017, so a year and a half into the, the implementation of this program, we stopped to take a look at the statistics. Over 30% of the people that were hired under this program, now there are all individuals that identify with a disability. So out of 30% of the people that were hired through that program into state service, 30% of them were people of color. 30% were people of color. So that program, although it was designed to increase and improve the state's numbers of individuals that identified with disabilities in the workforce, it really met many other affirmative action goals of the state that were not intended for it to cover. But I think it illustrates really strongly the intersectionality between disabilities. We don't discriminate. Anybody can be a part of our team at any moment. Doesn't matter what skin color you have. It doesn't matter what economic status you have. Doesn't matter how much money you have. A simple accident or injury could allow you to enter into our community. And, and I think the, the benefit of that is, and, and you take me, for example, I've lived now with my blindness for almost 30 years. Almost equal amount of time as I was a sighted person. Because I deal with blindness every day, every moment, I can't make it go away. I don't get to leave it at home. Sometimes it's with me all the time, whether I want it or not, it's with me. Because of that, I have developed some problem solving skills that hopefully some of you have never had to deal with or figure out on your own. How do you navigate this situation? How, how does, how do you deal with this type of a situation when you find yourself in the middle of it? And I use that as an illustration because many people with disabilities live with their disabilities. It's a part of who they are. They're experts at problem solving and figuring out how to mitigate that disability in order for them to do what they want or need to do. So right off the bat, people with disabilities have this ability to see things differently and to solve problems differently because we have to. We just downright have to, or we're going to be left behind. And I don't know about you, but I don't want to be left behind. So we get to exercise that skill. So even if you think somebody's disability is so extensive that they couldn't possibly be of some value, there's value in that person living with their own disability that could bring a greater awareness to the work that's done by the collective. And I'll, I'll leave it at that and open it up for some questions or comments from folks.
This is David. Chair Zelli, how long do we have?
We have two items.
Having a hard time hearing.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I left my microphone up in my head. I'd say we have another, like, maybe another 10 minutes or so for some questions. And Chai had a question.
I actually have a, thank you, Chair. I actually have a comment, and I just want to thank David and Ken. And I appreciate the points you made about the intersectionality of disabilities with, with race. And that the, the, our conversations about equity are not a zero sum game where the absolute win of one group equals the absolute loss of something from the other groups. And my boss, former mayor, St. Paul Mayor Chris Coleman, used to like to say when he talked about equity, that a rising tide raises all ships. And then when we talk about one kind of disadvantage or disability or whatever demarcation of, of historical oppression and inequity, and that we uplift all of them when we make good policy that, that lifts one, we lift the others. Thank you.
Judy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again for sharing this information with us. Again, just going back to my comments originally, when I was doing some work at Greater MSP around diversity and inclusion and you know, making the world better for all people is better for all people. So I'm really appreciating the buttons to open doors right now as we are trying to not touch everything going around the world. And I'm like, you know, this is great. It's benefiting me and I'm not in a wheelchair. So I get it, right? Woo hoo! But, so, you know, that's one of the lenses I'm trying to expand, right, is to better understand what changes can we make in the systems we can control that expand for everybody? So I'll, I'll say one thing in particular, we were talking at a council of the whole, I believe, within the last year, several months ago, about our transit stations and ADA accessibility projects that are in queue, but we don't have enough money, I think was the takeaway to, to kind of do them as quickly as we'd probably all like to. But we, we looked at that, and I think there was some angst amongst the council members thinking like, gosh, we should, we should really get this done. But there are constraints. I would just say this, and, and we do have real constraints. We know this right now, especially with state deficit and federal funding and all of it. But we can still prioritize, right? It's always a matter of what we choose to prioritize that's going to receive the attention and the focus. And so that's something that I think we should, you know, come back and visit as a matter of practicality. And then I will just hearken back to things that Councilmember Wolf says during some of our meetings too, where, and I'm just going to be honest here, because our intentions are all good and we are working really great as a group, and I love that, and our staff is great. But it does feel like sometimes when we talk about where money should go, whether it's around housing or what, probably mostly on housing, I believe. It does feel like we have the two groups competing against each other, maybe in our own discussions. I don't think that's the intent, and maybe I, it's a sense I pick up. But I, I feel that there's some angst too around this, and how do we reconcile that, given the conversation and the, the great information that was shared with us today? I'd like to better understand that maybe that's what Councilmember Wolf was kind of indicating in her comments earlier, but I'm not sure.
Thank you. I know that Linnea had a comment, and then Wendy.
Thanks, Chair. One, I just want to thank the presenters, and quick comment. I, I want to take to heart the feedback we received today about Webex and just see if we can find out what are better platforms. I'm, it would be really helpful for me, like Councilmember Lillibrin mentioned, use a lot of different platforms during this time. But it would, if, if the platform we're using is not accessible to a portion of our population, then I just wonder if we could take a look at that and, and be responsive to that one piece. I want to also just extend an invitation to continue conversation as well. And I appreciate the invitation being extended to us, particularly around what Councilmember Johnson just shared. The note, the, we do have, we do make decisions to prioritize certain things. And one of the presenters, and I can't remember which one, I apologize, shared that people are color, of color are overrepresented in the disparity, disability community. I think it would be great for us to spend some time talking about what are the strategies that people from within the community, leaders from within the community are suggesting for dealing with the issues of racial inequality and, and the impacts and intersection with disability community and needs. Because in the little bit of research I've been able to do, I've seen that there's a very robust conversation around that. And we should be taking advantage of and, and participating in that conversation so that we don't view it as, Councilmember Lee said, as a zero sum game. And also, as one of the presenters also mentioned, to acknowledge that we are dealing with a situation where we're dealing with scraps in the bucket. It's just not enough, and we have to fundamentally change the way we approach these things. One example would be to ensure whenever we put in a project, it's going in, you know, with universal design in mind the first time, so we're not having to fix things afterwards, which is a lot more expensive and difficult.
Great comments. Wendy, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things. David, if you could email out the stats and things that you didn't have time to talk about today, that would be fantastic. So we could peruse that later. The other thing is, I, my experience has been somewhat different in terms of the intersectionality piece because my husband is a person of color and he has a brain injury. And he grew up overseas and, and so he's, you know, English was his second language. And he was a Minneapolis police officer, which makes him like really, really unpopular right now. And it, my experience has been that if he, he gets discriminated against on a daily basis. But if he was discriminated against because he is Asian, then we'd have a way to fight that because that's illegal. But because the discrimination is sort of just a continual drip, drip, drip of hostility because he's disabled, we don't have any protection. And so when people say, yeah, rising tide lifts all boats, it's ironic that you would attribute that to, to Mayor Coleman because he knows about what happened to us didn't think that there was anything wrong with it. But there, there is some serious discrimination that's going on in healthcare that people, you know, there, there's a different attitude amongst doctors towards people with disabilities than towards everybody else. If it's something that's easily treatable, yeah. But if it's not something that's easily treatable, you're sort of just treated like you're like, just go deal with it. We, you know, there's nothing we can do, don't care. And it, you don't get the same attention from, even for medical people as other people do. So, you know, if, 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 I don't know. I don't know where I'm going with this. It's just my experience, we have had some just brutal, horrible things happen to my family because he's disabled and no way to fix it. And, and I don't, I, I think it's important to be able to put your feet in other people's shoes. I mean, even just going someplace, we've been told if things are hard for you, just stay home. And so things like going to our son's graduation, they wouldn't make accommodations, and they said, just, just stay home. And so he missed our, he, the first graduation was hideous. It would just, was terrible because it didn't work. The second one, he missed our son's graduation, couldn't even go. And then the third one, it took me six months of planning to be able to get him in the door and be able to participate in the, in the graduation, because everybody says, well, there's a ramp. It's ADA accessible. You can, you can do it. And it's like, no, he's not in a wheelchair. There's other kinds of issues that people can have. And there's just so much stereotyping that goes on with people with disabilities. So I hope we can have a longer conversation about this because it needs more than an hour and 20, hour and 20 minutes or whatever it is that we're doing. But thank you, thank you, thank you, David and Ken for being here. But thank you, thank you, thank you, David and Ken for being here.
Yeah. Let me just jump in real quick. So if you can imagine what kind of a medical system we would have if, if you happen to be using a wheelchair and you needed to go to your medical provider, you could get in the building, most assuredly with accessibility laws that exist. You get into the medical exam room, I mean, are you going to be able to get into the room? Is the door wide enough for your wheelchair, number one? And when you get in the, the exam room, are you going to be able to get up on the examination table? Is that table accessible to you as a person in a wheelchair? Most of the time, the answer is no to all of those. So is there no wonder why there's disparity in our medical situation? And why people with disabilities have more medical underlying conditions than the general population? If you can't access medical, medical care, that's going to greatly affect your ability to ward off different types of medical conditions. And, and I'm not saying that's the entire reason, but that's a huge part of it. And getting back to my original point, we don't have to have all of the answers. And some of the decisions that we make are going to be made that appear to some people to be inappropriate or in, in, in direct conflict with what somebody needs. That's part of the political process we exist in as human beings. But I think if we can ever, if we can in every one of those situations, point to the fact that we talked about that, that was part of the discussion. It was part of what was put on the table to figure out what the right direction to go was. And that had the light of day, it had discussion, it was discussed, it was part of the equation to come up with the solution. I, I don't think anybody can, can argue with that. What I think people can argue more readily about is when decisions are made without input from people that are impacted by those decisions. In the disability community, there is a phrase, and I'm starting to hear it used more in race discussions. Nothing about us without us. That's been the disability mantra for a long time. And I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled that that's getting some, some airtime, not just with people with disabilities. But that should be a guiding principle for us. Everyone should have a voice that is affected by the decisions we make. And it should be part of our responsibility to ensure those voices get brought to the table. And I started off with inclusion and diversity being one of the key factors, one of the two key factors of ensuring that the policies we create are equitable and equal for everybody. That's part of building our awareness and helping us grow as human beings to understand different needs that we all have and trying to figure out a solution. We're, we're not going to get it right every time and, and we can't be expected to. But we can make a greater effort in making sure the right voices are at the discussion table when we make those choices.
Really great. Sue, I think you had a question, comment. It might be muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do. And if time doesn't permit tonight, I'd be, I'd be fine if, if David and Ken, you could respond to this with a follow-up email. But I'm, I'm interested in knowing what the challenges of COVID have posed for folks who have disabilities and what we as a council might be able to do to work with you on that.
You know, that's, that's a great question. And, and let me just share something that, you know, as a blind person navigating in my environment, I have to touch things. That's the only way I can ground myself in my environment. Otherwise, I know not where I am or where anything else is or what relationship one has to the other. I have to touch something to figure out where I am in my environment. And when all the advice we get is, don't touch, don't touch, don't touch things that other people have touched, that's not possible in my world, in my environment. I have to touch, that's my safety net in knowing where I am in my environment. So if, even if we took that forward with some of the issues we deal with from a transport, a public transportation perspective, thinking about those times that we have to touch something, can we do that without making somebody touch something? Can we do it where it's an automatic system? And we're not going to be able to solve that every single time. But having that knowledge and awareness is what I mean when I talk about we need to expand our own ability to understand how other people exist in the same environment we exist in. And that can only really be done by sharing it. So again, getting back to that inclusiveness that I talked about before. I think that's a huge, simple solution to begin addressing some of these awareness issues that can only be developed when we, when we put ourselves in those positions to be more aware. And I don't expect you to understand my world and my need to touch things. But I do need people to understand that that's how and why I do what I do. It's part of being safe in the environment. So again, the only way to expand that awareness is to be exposed to it. The only way to expose it is to invite it to the table. So I, I hope I'm not making things too simplistic, but that certainly is a good start, I think.
We have time for just a couple of quick questions. And, and Wendy and Deb, we'll hear from both. Wendy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up quick on, on Councilmember Vento's question. A couple of the things that have come up that I've been aware of in the last couple of months because of COVID. I've been hearing from people who live in group homes who have jobs. And the staff comes and goes every day. But if you live in a group home and you have a job and you leave, you have to be quarantined for 14 days after you come back. So that means that anybody who lives in the group home can't have a job, but the people who work there can come and go every day. So you're, you know, treating people totally different based on their disability, instead of seeing everybody as a person. The other example is a little more personal. My daughter-in-law has a very severe congenital heart defect. And she was supposed to have surgery at Mayo the beginning of April. And she is, she was severely compromised in her circulation to the point where she had below 80% O2 sat, which is very dangerous medically. But she wasn't allowed to have her procedure because they were preserving space for COVID people. So if you had a O2 sat below 80 as a COVID patient, you could come to the hospital. But if you have a congenital heart defect that needed surgery, you couldn't. And that's just another example of treating people of different worth because of disability. That nobody really looked at that as, gee, that's maybe not fair. That was just policy.
Deb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Deb Barber. So I just wanted to thank both Ken and David for the conversation with us today. I do think it's something that needs to be expanded and we need to continue with. I definitely want to, well, I, one thing, I'm very happy to hear that you feel that the relationship between TAC and, and council and Transportation Committee has improved. That makes me very happy. It's been very nice. We have, David serves as a liaison at Transportation Committee. So we regularly hear from, from them. And then with Councilmember Lee sitting on TAC, I think we get good information back. A couple of things I would like to definitely make sure that we get on, on sort of work systems for the next little while is a revisit of the Metro Mobility Task Force. We had a number of great outcomes and things we wanted to do, we did some of them. And now I think it's a good time to review them. But then I do like, I would like that opportunity to have some more conversations about how people interact with the transit system. It was sort of alluded into how Ken was talking about how you have to touch system, touch things to move and how, what improvements we can make. We're doing a lot of work in our service improvement planning as we go forward. And I think we should have some conversations about that sort of interaction as we build up that sort of customer experience for everybody as well. So I would love to have some more conversations between TAC for sure at the Transportation Committee level.
That's great. And, and Deb, I think that's a perfect little final comment. Because, you know, when we think about next steps, it's not just our own awareness, which we've gained a start tonight, but how we think we might integrate some of this into all of our work. And I can't thank you enough, David and Ken. Honestly, it is a, a real kind of part of our own awakening and we've had more kind of conversations and learning about our roles as policymakers, but also knowing that this is, this is, it starts a little bit how we can approach, you know, as you say, the intersectionality, the idea that this could benefit a lot of the different work we do by taking it seriously and actually seeing and connecting where that priority, where that, that attention can, can, can be gained. So I see this as a, this is, this time as a start, but it certainly was really valuable for us. And, and we would love to kind of, you know, stay connected in a number of ways through the committees or maybe even a revisit if we think about how we can audit or be kind of gaining, continue to gain kind of awareness and understanding of what it means for everything we do. So I can't join me, if we were here, we would applaud, but I just want, behalf of all the, the, right. I will thank you for behalf of all of us for you spending your time with us this afternoon. And, and also, Ken, I realize now with the COVID, that your world is touching things and, and people and, and spaces and like really very poignant that you're this world. Just another reason why we're living in this upside down world, which is challenging for so many. Let's see, we're, we're going to go to our second information item, which is also incredibly important and also a beginning. We're going to hear from Mitzi Kennedy, our Equity Manager, who is going to kind of present our Equity Strategy Framework. And, and we'll have a time to, to have a conversation with her. So Mitzi, I know you're in the room somewhere.
Thank you. And I have to say that I apologize upfront just because I, my connection is always bad. And they're sending me a headset because they have told me that that's the problem, that I need a headset now. Wasn't doing this the whole three months that we've been teleworking, but suddenly it started and there's nothing I can do. I'm waiting on that headset. So bear with me, I will turn off my mic when I'm not speaking to try to minimize it. And someone remind me if I forget to do that. The first thing that I want to, so thank you for having me, first of all, council members, Chair. I appreciate this opportunity. And before I get started, I have to say that I am the Equity Manager for Abroad Equity. One of the challenges that people with disabilities have is unemployment. I have some data right in front of me that says compared to persons without disabilities in Minnesota, persons with disabilities are 2.6 times more likely to be unemployed, 3.4 times more likely to be not be participating in the labor force, 3.4 times more likely to not be participating in the labor force, and more than half is likely to work full-time year-round. And so that, this data around employment has prompted us to make sure that in the framework that I'm about to provide an overview for you is a strategy that is, is about adopting policy that supports hiring people with disabilities. That's specifically in the framework that I'm going to talk to you about. It's part of the workforce equity goal. There's a program, I don't know if you've heard of it, called Connect 700. That's part of the state of Minnesota. And so that kind of a program could be looked at so that we could do more to reduce these kinds of disparities for people with disabilities. So I wanted you to just know that. And, and now I'll just go into the framework. This is an overview of our Equity Strategy Framework. It provides guidance for all five divisions and an operational structure for the integration of equity throughout council operations. I don't have to tell you that with the murder of George Floyd, we're in a historical moment of major transformational change that makes this strategy, our commitment, our responsibilities and our actions even more urgent. Because Minnesota is at the epicenter of a national movement about dismantling systemic racism, then so is the Met Council. This strategy specifically addresses racial equity as an important component to reduce racial disparities. Because we all know that the greatest disparities in the region, in the state and across the country, exist along racial lines. The strategy calls for systemic changes that are designed to reduce racial disparities. The strategy is aligned with those associated plans, goals and policies that already exist, including of course, live outcomes, the various policy plans, the council priorities in transportation, reducing racial disparities, housing and sustainability, and the equity policy. There's definitions and documents that are foundational and have informed the strategy. The implementers are really all of us. But at the end of the day, the strategy calls for executives to establish divisional accountability, clarify roles and responsibilities, and to strengthen the processes and approaches that advance council-wide strategic equity effort. I work in OEO, the Office of Equal Opportunity. And our role and responsibility is to coordinate all the council efforts and collaborate with the divisions to meet the equity goals. We will provide technical assistance, we will document outcomes and progress, and help the divisions to identify successful strategy, tools and best practices. HR has a major lead in workforce equity. They have a responsibility to provide technical assistance and support to the divisions to access and understand the data, to plan and design and implement workforce equity strategy specific to divisional operational functions. You know that the EAC is, has a role as well to engage in dialogue with directors and staff on specific equity initiatives and provide recommendations for implementation, progress and performance towards achieving the council-wide goals. And I would say that all our committee structures will be participating. I've already gone to the TAC to ask them for their participation on definition and that to, you know, look at what role they want to play as well. The council communication and engagement offices will assist to design and implement the strategy communication plan and the community engagement and outreach effort. Change team members, their staff members also have a role in working to develop strategies in their work. And then you all, we could come back, I could come back to Cal meetings to provide updates about progress. I've talked to you about roles and responsibilities of staff and executives. So you can decide for yourselves what action you're going to take and what your responsibility will be for this systemic, systemic transformation that, that we're going for with this strategy. that we're going for with this strategy. Next slide, please. There's the three broad priority areas in the strategy. They include community engagement, workforce equity, and investments and procurement. I anticipate that we'll be going through a lot of dialogue about these goal areas and in clarifying further the role that each division plays in implementation. We intend to work with each division to measure our performance and create council-wide and divisional plans that assess impact, includes goals, shows our progress. We have been working on a change process for over a year now. And we are continuing to develop what we call a Theory of Change Mapping Methodology that will help each division and department to design real equity strategies that are undergirded by performance management. There's a tool that we've been working on, and we'll be working with that tool and with other best practices in the toolbox depending on the needs of each division. And then in terms of implementation, that requires that each division will put forth a plan for how they will prioritize racial equity in their work, how they will embed equity in all their operations, planning, and investments, how they will advance workforce equity and allocate resources for equity work, and how they will create collaborative problem-solving and decision-making with stakeholders, and how they will measure performance. Next slide just talks about next step, next steps. So what we're doing now, even though actually we've been meeting with directors and change team staff for some time, but we're continuing now that the strategy is in written format to work with executive team members, so directors and their staff that come to you, division directors, EAC change, to continue work on technical assistance tools, equity plans and process, to work with those leaders to develop accountability and to clarify the roles and responsibilities of everybody, to strengthen relationships in the processes that are needed to move forward. And then, of course, to compile the information that we're going to get about progress and then to report back to all the stakeholders. Again, that includes you. So that's really what it is. I wanted to just come and give you, provide this overview for you so you could understand where we're going. I'm ready to take questions if you have any.
Thank you so much, Mitzi. And I think it's safe to say this is a broad overview and that we will be hearing more details as we. Any questions? Riva?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mitzi, for the overview. Our second time, at least our second time getting the overview of the Equity Framework. I like the fact that the presentation was very precise and to the point. A lot of keywords in there that are very powerful in terms of how we can approach implementation of the strategy and the framework from a standpoint of accountability and the way in which we strengthen the process. I do have a question. I know at one point when we were talking about operation, the question came up about starting with N. So I've got two questions. One is, are we going to have a strategy and plan internally for the Met Council? And, you know, what, and this is to councilmembers too, what is the best way to do the follow-up to do this on a quarterly basis? A lot of times things just kind of get lost in the process. And I think if we can be proactive in thinking about a timeline that would be helpful, either coming from Mitzi's organization or from the council.
I don't know if Mitzi or Si or somebody else in the staff wants to take that in terms of timeline?
This is Ashanti. Chair and councilmembers, in the goal section of the Strategy and Framework, our plan is to measure progress over the next three years and towards these goals.
May I, Chair?
Sure, please.
Yeah, so it's going to happen over three years. I don't know, I mean, how often are we going to revisit it? If you don't have that now, that's fine. But it would be kind of nice to know kind of like what our milestone timelines are for implementation over three years.
I think what, Riva, you asked, and it's probably in a lot of our minds is, and maybe Ashanti, you can answer it. It's, you know, this plan over a three-year period will have steps along the way. And when would we be most, you know, productive to be engaged? And what should we be looking to as we kind of start building this out? Is that it, Riva?
Yeah, yeah. So if someone from our OO organization can get back with me on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, and Moose and I would be answered now. I think we all would want to know kind of how that plan kind of flashes out. I agree, and we'll follow up with that.
Chair, councilmembers, this is Si Jordan, Director of Equal Opportunity. And as I'm hearing the question, we will be working with the divisions on what their work plans will be. And so some of those timelines will be firmed up through that planning process. But we can certainly commit as the Office of Equal Opportunity with the Equity Unit to come before the council on a quarterly basis to provide you with updates of where we're at and where our next steps are.
Chair, may I get clarification?
Sure.
Did you say quarterly, Si?
Yes, quarterly, we can commit to that.
Okay, great, thank you.
I know at Minda, we had something called the Unified Plan, and it really kind of had a lot of small steps. But there was a unification, kind of looking at the organization as a whole. And I think it would really be nice, knowing that we're in various divisions, but there's some things that kind of are kind of across. So I guess that would be interesting to see as it flashes out. Manaya, you had a question?
I think one of the, and this is a build on Councilmember Shambless's request. One of the things that I've seen used with equity frameworks and with elected or appointed leadership bodies is having a specific dashboard that's designed for our level to monitor with key performance indicators, clarity of who is accountable for accomplishing those indicators, and timelines that would span the length of the implementation period. So as shared earlier, three years. So that would be something that I would like to see and have.
A great, great request. Anyone else with some thoughts? Wendy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was looking on the website in preparation for this meeting, and I found a one-page PDF that we got last July about the Equity Framework and then the PowerPoint for today. But I didn't really see anything else on the website to kind of flesh out what's going on. Is there other information that we can read? I like to read things. I remember things better that way. So I'm just wondering if there's anything of that sort.
One of the reasons why I mentioned the Communication Department's role is that they're looking at the document that we created and trying to make that document accessible and, you know, meaningful to. And so they will be taking a look at it and we'll be sharing it. We have a document, we could share it. But I really wanted them to make sure that the document was accessible, there's a chart in it, and to make sure that it reads well and communicates what we wanted to communicate. But absolutely, we can share a document very, very soon.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may, this is Si Jordan.
Sure, Si.
Chair, councilmembers, just to follow on Mitzi's statement. Yes, we do have an internal summary that's probably about three pages long that we could certainly share as we're looking at the bigger messaging document that Communications will collaborate with us on. I also wanted to follow up on Councilmember Atlas Ingerson's question. A part of our measurement will be setting up that dashboard. So that is something we will be working towards in this coming year.
Great. Other questions, thoughts? Peter?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mitzi and Si, I'm going to send you a link to a webinar that I attended earlier this week called Sharpening the Focus on Social Equity to Make Strategic Budget Decisions. It was put on by the ICMA, International City County Managers Association. And it highlighted the city of San Antonio. They have a, what they call their Budget Equity Tool. And it helps each division in San Antonio think about their budget in terms of equity and inclusion. And I found it very powerful. And I think, Mitzi, you were talking about technical assistance. And this could be one area where we provide technical assistance around setting our budget. If a budget really is a moral document, which it clearly is, I mean, I'm thinking about the old saying about, don't tell me what your priorities are, just show me your budget, and I'll tell you what your priorities are. So I would encourage you to look at this webinar, which I'll send to you later today.
Thanks so much. I love that idea.
Anyone else? Ollie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering if Peter might be able to send that to Liz or Chair Zelli and share that with all of us?
Let's do that, Peter. Great, thanks. We got it. Liz has it, that's right. I mean. Yeah, great thought. And I appreciate Si and Mitzi, you're on the track. But knowing maybe you're flexible, listen to some of these ideas. Maybe we can cycle back if there's any questions about it. Sounds like we're kind of heading on that right path. Any other thoughts, questions? I mean, we know this is just the beginning. So it's not, this is not something we're not going to be addressing in so many different ways, in different divisions, different committees along the way. Si or Mitzi, if you have any other last thoughts, we can adjourn in a minute. Any last word you'd like to make sure we know?
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mitzi and Ashanti and Si and everybody here in the council. This has been a really interesting couple hours. And I think we've certainly indoctrinated not just with the disabilities, but understanding where and how we're going to be more actionable in our search for equity and inclusion. I know we'll have more work ahead. So it's still beautiful outside. And Riva, you've been outside the whole time. You know, we're impressed with that. And if there is no other business, I think we're ready to adjourn. So have a great afternoon, and we will see you very soon. Thanks, everyone.